Right, um, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody taking the time to do this special meeting for budget purposes. I think we've got several items on the agenda and everybody's time's precious. So without further ado, Marsha, can I turn it over to you? Can you get us started, please? Sure, are you there?
I'm, I'm waiting. I was trying to get to my mute button. Do you see the screen? I'm trying to figure out who has control of the screen. Is it, I guess it's me? Are you looking at the presentation?
You can share your screen now, Marsha, but we don't see anything right now.
Okay. Okay, I see. Sorry. Um, let's keep them.
There we go.
Now you can see it. Okay. Well, uh, just in review, we covered pretty much every department so far. And, um, we are now into, um, the, the last two departments, which are Public Works and Park and Rec. And then we have a review of, uh, the notable items this evening, CMIIP, and the Revenue Natural Tax Rate. And as we go through this, I guess I'm going to ask for some guidance towards the end. I'd like to tonight, I mean, out of accomplishment, obviously, cover all of the, the needs and wants of the different departments. But the, the important thing for us, I think, is to kind of have consensus on what rate we think we need to use for the budget and then see which items we can include, exclude from the notable items and, you know, see, see where we fall with all that. And if we have to actually dip into fund balance to achieve some of the objectives and council priorities for this year. So without further ado, we're going to start with Public Works and, uh, I'm going to hand it over to Brian Price.
Good afternoon. Members, can everybody hear me?
Got you, Brian.
All right. Well, we'll just jump right in here and get started. If you can take me to my first slide, Marsha. You'll see here, uh, we have some cost reductions and some offsets. So our cost reductions mostly in our capital outlay, we have about a 27,000 reduction inventory and equipment. We have about a $24,000 reduction. Not really looking at any real large, uh, equipment purchases this year. And we've been able to keep the budget down pretty good during the pandemic, you know, we're trying not to spend a lot of money saving everything we can. And in the offset increases, we have some, uh, computer related with the work order software system, which is right around 9.3,000. And payroll and related, according to the pay policy, about 4.5,000. Uh, if you can take me to my next slide, Marsha. Right now, the biggest challenge we're going to face, and that's what I'm going to talk to you about mainly with my budget here, is if you see up in that top right corner, that's just kind of an example of some of our major thoroughfares through Stallings, where NC DOT does the cutting. You know, we all have issues there. They, they've reduced their number of cuts every year. And even when they cut, that's, that's a picture of after they've cut, you see all that tall grass and everything that's left behind. So the problem we run into is a lot of high grass and just unsightly landscaping on the right away in the areas in town. And I just want to note too, I've talked with some of our neighboring towns, Matthews and Indian Trail, namely, spoke with their Public Works Director and on this budget year, they're actually looking at getting new equipment and they're going to start cutting their NC DOT right away. So it's a, it's a major concern that we're going to have to look at because, you know, as you ride through our town versus the other towns, we're going to start to look, you know, kind of unsightly with our landscaping. Cause you know, as it stands right now, we just cut a strip on either side of the sidewalk, trying to keep our sidewalks looking good. But most people don't even notice that unless they're walking on the sidewalks. We do get quite a few calls about, you know, the state maintained roads looking pretty rough. So the current challenge would be, you know, we just don't have enough help in our Public Works Department. And looking at the challenge we have, if we outsourced all landscaping, you know, to give us the cuts we need versus giving the current staff we have time to do our other duties, it would be about $96,000. So we're looking at, you know, 20 grand on road sides, five grand Town Hall Campus, Stallings Park, 21 Blair Mill Park 20, because Public Works does help with Parks and Rec and cutting those parks so that we can get them all done in a timely manner. And the new thing coming up is the bypass area down there, right around, I think we've spoke about this a little bit around the hospital where the bypass Stallings and 74 all intertwined right there. NC DOT is doing a, a planting there. They're going to be putting a lot of plants around there. And they will not be maintaining it. They, the only way they agree to put the plantings in those areas is if the town of Stallings takes over the care of that. And if we outsource that, it's about 30,000 plus water costs, because there will be an irrigation system there. But if you do look, you know, if we do this in-house, it's quite a, quite a bit of a difference in money there. So about $26,000 for all of it. And you can see as you go through there, the price comparisons. So it's, it's a, it's a large cost savings to do in-house. And it just offers us more service enhancements, bring more services in-house, in-house to save the town money. But we do lack the manpower for that. So, you know, the solution on my side is, you know, I don't really want to outsource anything. I think, you know, we have a good Public Works Department. We just need a little bit of growth with it. So we'd bring, you know, that in-house. And in addition to just cutting the strips on the sidewalk, we would start cutting on Old Monroe, Stallings Road, Stevens Mill to Oaks Spring, Lawyers to Hawthorne. It's those, it's the road areas where our sidewalks are that we cut now, those major areas. We would begin to cut from the road shoulder back to the sidewalk so that we can keep that, you know, looking good and keep the town looking good. So the proposal for that is we would need a new employee and a couple of pieces of equipment that would be one-time purchase. And I'll kind of go through that on the next slide, Marsha, if you will. So some of the pieces of equipment that we would need to do this, we already have, you know, the, the major pieces with our Mini X and the tractor. We just need a couple of implementations that would look to that, such as like a grapple, which would help us with moving, you know, large tree debris from the side of the road. And then you'll see the sickle mower and an offset flail mower. The sickle mower is in your bottom left corner and the offset flail mower is in your bottom right. And those would help us on ditch lines throughout Stallings to be able to cut back some of that high grass and keep a a good grass height throughout the town. And then the brush attachment does on your bottom middle picture. That's an attachment for the Mini X excavator that helps us in some of the areas where the brush starts to grow over the road or over the sidewalk. It lets us cut it back. You can see how that machine works. I mean, we can do it at any angle and be able to cut it back. And that's one piece that we would mainly need down by the bypass area where that bridge is, because that's another thing you can see as, as the, when you make in your, like if you're turning right off of Stallings Road and the bridge are to your left, they don't cut any of that. That's just something NC DOT doesn't do either. And they're putting that responsibility on us. So we would need something like that to be able to cut those areas. And Marsha, if you go to my next slide. And this is just a graph that kind of breaks down what we would be looking at. So that new employee would be a total of 53,200 and that includes benefits. So that's, that's the total cost of what we would be looking at there. So just showing a comparison like with the landscaping that we'd be looking at in our first year, it would be right around 80,200. So it's, it's still a significant savings, but that 80,200 just shows for some of the equipment that we're going to be looking at, that we would need. This is a one-time cost. And then you can see the year after year cost. And it's still quite a bit of a savings to keep all that in-house and take on more of the landscaping duties. And Marsha, if you go to the next slide, I can explain a little bit more. Also having another staff member would allow us to bring in, you know, we talked about this last year, but we didn't have, we didn't have the manpower then. So, you know, we kind of fore, forewent that with the pandemic going on. We didn't want to add a lot of major equipment or staff at the time. But, uh, one of the things we could do is if we bring a lift into the shop, it allows us to do some vehicle maintenance and some of our own equipment repair. And just using oil changes as an example, I had spoke with, uh, Assistant Chief John Flynn and got some pricing from him. Our current price that we pay per vehicle is about $60 for an oil change. And we have roughly 29 vehicles. And it's probably about three oil changes a year. So that's about 69 oil changes. And when you do the math on that, that's $4,140 a year just in oil changes on the cars. But if we bring that lift in and we do some of that in-house, you go toward the bottom there, you'll see the lift's about $10,000. And we can do the oil changes in-house and that accounts for the materials and a staff member to do at their time at about $17 per vehicle. So for us to do a full year of services, it's about $1,173. So, you know, we're roughly saving about $3,000 there. And I also want to note that in speaking with Assistant Chief Flynn, one of the things we would be able to help with that is when they go to do an oil change now, you know, they have to drive down to rail side or try to set an appointment. And even with that, you know, you got to figure they're going to be gone for about an hour. So, you know, in essence, we're, we're paying someone, you know, their, their salary for one hour to sit down there and get an oil change. Whereas, you know, we're able to schedule this a lot better in-house and roughly 15 to 30 minutes is all it's going to take for us to do one in-house, you know? And if they're there, they can be doing paperwork in the office or whatever, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't take us as long as having to send a vehicle out to have an oil change done. And if you could go to my next slide, Marsha. And that's kind of what we're looking at, like with the vehicle maintenance costs. And again, we're just talking oil changes there, you know? But there's, there's some other things that we'd be able to do with in-house maintenance with batteries, windshield wipers, air filters, that sort of thing. But as far as the budget purpose, I wanted to just kind of show oil changes, which is the main maintenance cost on a vehicle. And so that's what we're looking at right there is the 4140 versus 1173. And when you do the breakdown on that, we have an ROI of about 4.1 years on the lift, which is pretty good. You know, anything under five years on ROI is, is pretty good. So if we could go to the next slide, Marsha. So just kind of give you a summary and a breakdown of the notable items. Mainly what we're looking at this year, everything else stayed the same on the budget. We didn't really have any major increases. And we're sitting pretty good on our, uh, equipment right now. But, uh, what we would be looking at is needing a new employee for 53,200 total cost to town. The tractor attachments for 10,000. The lift for the shop at 10,000. The brush cutting attachment for the Mini X is 7,000. And again, just showing that summary on contracting out all landscaping would be about $96,000. And we can provide this service in-house for 26,000. And like, uh, getting the shop lift, comparing oil changes, we can do that in-house for dollars per vehicle versus $60 per vehicle. So, you know, we're looking at some savings in-house of about 70,000 on landscaping and about 3,000 on vehicle maintenance. And I think that's all I, did I have another slide in there, Marsha? Yeah, one more slide. Yeah, this is, uh, our five-year considerations. And, uh, you see the new employee we have there for 53,200. We had the zero turn that was already in the budget. That's something we need because, uh, one of our mowers is already starting to age out. It's got several hours on it and we're starting to have some issues with that. So we do have to get a new zero turn. And then we're showing the 10,000 for the attachments, 10,000 for the lift. And that's a total of 88,200. And then just looking at the timeframe going out for the year 22, 23, we're looking at a smart meter installation, which a smart meter is something I've looked at putting in the old Town Hall building. And it basically helps, it starts to, it's almost like a, a smart thermostat for your house. It starts to learn the building and learn peak times of the day and non-peak times. And it starts to, you know, convert the energy. So you're not spending so much and to keep, you know, any way that I can keep reducing our utility bill as things I'm always looking at. And the HVAC repairs, we kind of ongoing, put the $20,000 in there. Just so we're covered in the event that we have any, any units go down, you know? We have about three old units left in Old Town Hall now. So I would see in the future, we can reduce that. In a lot of cases, we don't even spend all that money, but we need to have it there just so that we're, we're prepared for any kind of catastrophe with our HVAC. And then the only other thing I have there is for 24, 25, it's replacing our oldest Public Works truck. It'll be 10 years old at that time. And that's, that's kind of what Public Works usually looks at like a, a 10-year rotation plan on their vehicles. They pretty much age out at around 10 years. So that's kind of where I'm standing with my five-year considerations. And I think that's about all I have.
All right, Brian, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, anybody have any questions for Brian or Alex or Marsha on this?
Hey, Brian, um, if we take over the mowing along the state maintained roads, do, will the state pay us to do that?
They will have that. And that's something we're still looking at. I've talked to some of our neighboring towns too. And it's like Indian Trail, I asked them that same question and he said that because they were concerned, they're not going to try to get the money back because, you know, just to be honest, he told me that the giving that money is almost an act of Congress. He said, every time that you cut, you know, it's like a, a 10-page application that you have to submit for very little money. And sometimes they pay and sometimes they don't. I mean, it's absolutely something we're going to try. I just didn't want to commit that we'll be able to get X amount of dollars from them, not knowing what it would be. But it is absolutely something that when we do those cuts, we're trying to get a contract in place with them and submit for some funding.
Can, can we proactively reach out to them and, you know, give a bid and say, we'll cut it for X amount, you know, um, just pay us quarterly?
Yeah. And I have, I've reached out to them and they, they've given me some, some rough estimates and said that they can draw up a contract. So that's still something I'm working with on them. And I don't have any hard numbers on what that would be. But yeah, that's, that's definitely something we could look at getting some money back from them on that.
And would it make sense for us to partner with Indian Trail in some of these, yes, especially if we're going to look at state maintained roads? You know, us doing some of the Indian Trail roads and, and them doing some of ours where it makes sense just because, you know, it's hard to get equipment out places.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, we, I'll, I'll talk with them about that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hey, Brian, the, uh, the, the total budget asks is 266,000. Does that include the new employee and this equipment or, or not?
I don't think so, Marsha. That, that, that total budget that I was asking for doesn't include that, right? I think back on the first slide is what Mayor's referring to.
Brian and Alex here, it does not. I believe it includes the zero turn mower. But it does not include the, uh, additional employee well as, uh, the equipment for cutting the road sides, uh, like the grapple.
Got you. Okay. Well, yeah, like Brian said, the, the, the zero term was in the budget. So, uh, got you. Thank you, Alex.
There, I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Brian, I thought the police department had a lift already in their bay there. They don't have a lift?
No, ma'am, they do not.
Okay. And, um, with regard to your estimates on outsourcing, did you get any actual bids? Or is that just kind of brainstorming yourself on that?
Yes, ma'am. Those are actual bids that I have to do the work.
Okay.
We have two different bids. I think one is from, uh, Smith Landscaping and the other one is from Brown Skies.
Okay. And, um, I don't think you did any escalating on the employee cost when you projected it out several years. You were still showing, showing 53 too, but that would be subject to the, um, pay scale increases annually, wouldn't it?
Yes, ma'am. That, that's my mistake. I didn't, I didn't have that in there, but it would be subject to the, uh, the cola and, uh, pay step.
Right. Well, here's my concern with bringing that in-house is safety. Because it's dangerous being on some of those roads. And when you look at that bypass bank there next to the wall, I mean, you were talking about a special piece of equipment to handle that, but I sure wouldn't want anybody I cared about out there on a tractor or a piece of equipment to load that stuff. And it just gives me concern about what our liability is for the town. If we were to have employees taking on all that responsibility. So I'm going to have to think about this one a good bit.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. And I do understand your concerns and, you know, everything we do, we do try to be safe on. And I will say some of that we, we've already been cutting. We haven't got up to cutting like the, the bridge banks and nothing like that. But we do cut some of the medians right there at, uh, the bypass and Stallings Road because NC DOT just doesn't cut them. And, you know, we, we do everything we can to be as safe as we can, but there's, you know, there's always a chance for anything to happen. But we do try to do everything as safe as we can. And, you know, it's one of those things where I would just remind you that some of that stuff that, you know, we do all of our landscaping in-house now, you know, my, my showing what it would be outsourced is that, you know, we just, we don't have the manpower right now. It's just, you know, just a reminder, it's me and one employee doing everything throughout the town. So we do get kind of bogged down at times trying to get everything done. And we, we really do need another employee. And if, if we don't, you know, that's kind of where I'm saying that some of the landscaping, we'll have to try to contract out just to free up some of our time. We, we've got to be able to free up some time somewhere.
Right. Well, I understand that. And you do a very impressive job. I'm not criticizing you. I'm just a little concerned about.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And yeah, we, we've looked at it and been a little concerned with it ourselves. So we've, we've tried to think, think through the, the safety aspect as best we can. And I definitely understand your concerns on that.
All right. Any other questions from council? Steven, did you join us?
I am. I'm here.
All right, great. Thank you.
Still shoving some food. And so I'm, I'm holding on mute. I mean, or off the video for a moment.
There you go. That's all right. I just want to make sure you got it. There you go. All righty. Well, thank you, Brian, Marsha and Alex. All right. What's next?
Okay, next we have Park and Rec. Ashley, are you there?
I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I got you.
Okay, good. I'm in between, um, houses right now. I'm, I'm moving this week. So, um, I'm in the office and I don't have my camera, so I wanted to apologize for that. Um, but here we are. It's been a wild year. Everybody knows with COVID, um, and Parks and Rec. Um, you know, we had a little bit of a lull where playgrounds were closed, but then immediately, you know, people have been itching to get outside and, um, attend, you know, activities in the park. And, um, you know, we're really starting to see that pick up. So, um, but before I get into the first slide, um, we're, you're going to see a number that looks a little shocking because it's going to look like my budget, um, is doubling. Uh, but I just want to go ahead and set the tone there and remind everybody that we're looking at building the Vicory portion of the Blair Mill Greenway. And so a significant portion of that increase in the budget is actually coming from restricted funding through the Fienlue Parkland. So before you see the next slide, I don't, I don't want to address that elephant in the room. Um, so Marsha, if you'll kick it to the next one for me. Um, you'll see here, um, our budget was 685,000. We're significantly under budget this year, mostly due to not having our large special events. We are trying to, um, go ahead and finish up a few additional maintenance items throughout the park before the end of the fiscal year. But we do, uh, seem to be coming in under budget this year. Uh, and again, that, that increase there, it looks pretty, um, pretty daunting. But overall, operationally, uh, we're reducing our budget ask for this year in the operational, um, capacity. Um, we've completed some of those building and ground projects. We adjusted our utilities based on actuals because we replaced lights, um, in the park with LEDs. So that cost went down. Um, we've reduced our advertising budget, uh, relying more on social media, which has been working out for us and also capitalizing on the, um, free publication that comes out through Union County, um, or every month. Uh, and just kind of revamping our, our style there to be more local when it comes to advertising instead of paying for advertisements that go all over the county. Um, we're using more cost-effective vendors for our programming and events. Uh, and with our events this year, of course, we're concentrating more on the farmer's market in the upcoming year. So you'll see a decrease in our overall event budget. Of course, increases in salaries and related, uh, benefits that per our pay plan. Um, you will see a small increase to dues and subscriptions. That's because the safety aspect, um, our fees for like our, our labor posters and the things that we, um, have to comply with for OSHA used to be housed under the police department. Um, because Susan was the one who took care of that. Um, since I'm taking care of it now, I'm coding it into my budget, um, since we don't have a separate cost center for that. And then again, um, the capital outlay increases by $500,000 for the Vicory portion of the Greenway. Um, but just a reminder again, that, uh, majority of that is covered by Fienlue Parkland restricted funds. Next slide, please. Just, it's just a snapshot of what we're looking for, um, in events and programming. As soon as we get some hard dates set down, uh, for these events, I will of course, share it with you all. Um, we've got the farmer's market, um, you know, our, our ultimate event that happens in October, Christmas in the park. Um, and then some other small pop-up events that, um, we haven't actually scheduled yet, but they will be um, after the beginning of the calendar year. And then of course, keeping our programs, going to our craft kits, um, Easter egg hunt, scavenger hunts, the disc golf challenge, shred day, those kinds of things, um, have really been a hit this year, especially our pickup kits that we did. Um, you know, when people were stuck at home all the time. So we are reducing the ask for events and programs across the board this year. Um, just using better vendors. So we're saving some money. Next slide. Okay. So here's where some of the things that we've talked about over, um, the last couple of years. Wanted to put all these out here for you. You'll see them here. You'll see them on the notable items list. You'll see them on the CMIIP. Um, you know, we've discussed Blair Mill, um, as a whole site. And then, uh, through the, the, um, the enhancement discussions that we had, um, during the retreat this year, uh, the consensus seemed to be to kind of scale that back and do some more manageable enhancements there. This year, we, uh, we removed all of the old fencing and the old picnic tables and benches. We put new trash cans out, made improvements to the disc golf course. One of the items that came up was, uh, possibly adding a food truck pad. Um, so we estimated that cost at around $50,000 mostly because the, um, there are no utilities, uh, connections on the north side of the park. So if we decide to put that food truck pad there, um, the cost is increased. Um, if we're able to, you know, locate that in a different area, we can run off the junction box. Um, then that cost could of course come down. But we're looking at water and power that needs to be run, um, to some parts of that site. The only area we have that right now is where the restrooms are near the Fairhaven entrance. Um, Brian already mentioned in the public works, um, portion there that what the cost was estimated between 20 and 25,000, um, to outsource the landscaping at Blair Mill Park. I included this here because we had, um, a couple of requests to increase the level of service there, um, as far as how the grass looks and the, the tree trimmings, the cuttings, um, and things like that. Um, right now, our service level allows us to cut that, um, part once a week. Um, and that's like weather permitting. So if we wanted to increase that or contract it out, that is about the price there. Um, the signage price here for one sign, and you'll see this come up again uh, in our, our Greenway plan and for Stallings Park down here. Um, we base this estimate off of, uh, what our developers have been, um, paying to put in the signage on the new Greenway trails that are being installed. Um, that's probably a little bit on the high end. I'm sure we, you know, if we do a couple of signs at one time, we can negotiate that down. Um, and then included in the budget this year is the Vicory portion of Blair Mill Greenway. That's the N1 trail, um, in our master plan. Um, the estimate for that is 550,000 with 427-ish of that coming from Fienlue Parklands. And then the current, uh, Park and Rec budget savings. Um, you'll notice in the first slide, we're under significantly more than 74,000. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we had all our encumbrances in there in case, um, we needed some of this extra, uh, money to, to close out this year. But that current budget savings could increase, um, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. But that current budget savings could increase as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. And then brought back the private park enhancement quote here that we had for playground equipment that included synthetic turf, a shade structure with picnic area and fencing there. And then, I think I have another slide.
Hey, on this on this particular slide, you might want to note, the only thing that's funded in your budget right now is the five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the vicary portion, all the other things would be additional adds to her budget for this year.
Correct, all of those you'll see on the notable item list as as potential options for other funding. And then talking about five years and beyond, you know, I didn't put these in a specific year because it kind of depends year to year as to what we're looking at, you'll see them on the CMI IP. As our operational needs increase and we're expanding into having additional trails, additional green space that'll be turned over to the town through the development agreement and the construction of the new trail at Blair Mill and increasing service levels there, we we do need to look at possibly increasing staff levels or outsourcing some of the the landscaping work there. If we are going to do our landscaping there, we probably need to have our own equipment stored at Blair Mill. Right now, logistically, we have to borrow the public works vehicle, their trailer, their mowers. All their work has to stop to take us out to Blair Mill, takes about six hours to cut out there and then, you know, come back and that's only one, you know, one one day a week, but that kind of ties up all staff from public works and parks and rec for that one day and all the equipment. Of course, we want to increase our our keep with our training for our maintenance staff, professional staff. These are things, everything from our CPO certifications that allow us to mix the chemicals with splash pad, you know, to certified playground safety inspector, Eunice and myself are both certified parks and rec professionals. So we want to keep that in our considerations for the next five years. And then I put this in here, the sprinkler system in Stallings Park has been a non-functional since I have worked here. So looking out in a couple of years, we may want to look at either having that restored or some other option there to keep our our plants and our grasses looking nice down here, since we want to focus in this downtown area. And then also wifi in the park for automation needs, including the splash pad and security cameras. We have to have the wifi before we can put in the security cameras, so those kind of go hand in hand. Capital needs, we have two playgrounds at Stallings Park that are going to need to be replaced soon. The one is the oldest one in the park for the youngest children right behind that vacant lot and then the one that's right next door to the tennis courts is about twenty years old and they don't make replacement parts for these items anymore. So we've had to have the slides custom made the last couple of times we've replaced them and the company that we were using for that no longer offers that service, so. And you'll see that as we build out our our park system here, we want to maintain what we have in Stallings Park. And that way, you know, we continue to draw the community into this area and keep up the equipment there. Of course, building up Blair Mill Park is on the capital side, that greenway construction as it pertains to retrofitting sidewalks or transportation improvements as they're identified on the greenway master plan, if there's an opportunity for us to partner with that, that would be outstanding. And our own pickup truck and trailer so that we can haul our own grass cutting equipment is another need if we expand those services. You'll also remember, we talked about the community center for public use, this has been called the barn, it's been called, you know, it's been considered at Blair Mill Park and other places, so this is still in that capital realm. And then, you know, based on the popularity and success of our farmer's market as it grows, we may want to look at a permanent structure build out that would that would be similar to what they have at the county level that would allow us to have that on a basis that isn't only weather dependent. Other things we're looking at is establishing some annual events at Blair Mill Park, continuing to implement the greenway master plan, partnering with local municipalities to reduce duplication of services, us and Indian Trail staff meet pretty regularly. We have a weekly call with Union County Directors, so we're all sharing information and trying to make sure that we're consistent across the county with what we're offering and that we're not stepping on top of each other to, you know, so that we're building each other to success as a whole. And then, of course, continuing our commitment to maintaining our current property and assets. I feel like we've done an outstanding job with our the maintenance crew that we have with Public Works and Parks and Rec and I just want to make sure we keep that standard. Though we do have some concerns and they're highlighted on the next slide, about sustainability in the department. Since I've been here, the department size has been has been the same, but we have increased our number of events, we've increased our number of services, we've taken in the splash pad maintenance and landscaping in-house. And what where we're operating right now is not necessarily sustainable, we found ourselves in a situation where if one person gets sick or one of our part-time members retires or, you know, if we had it, you know, someone get COVID and was out for for like three weeks, we have to start dropping services. So we want to look as our department grows, how do we balance our services and our and our staffing level? We can increase staff, we could add positions, you know, one of the biggest areas I see that we're missing the mark is in our level of customer service to people who are in the park in the evenings and on the weekends. We have groups that come in as rentals throughout the summer. I was here Saturday, I've been here last couple Saturdays and there are at least five to six different groups in different areas of the park. All we have is a part-time person on the weekends who cleans bathrooms and empties trash. So we're missing the mark on checking in with those people to make sure their birthday parties are going well, having someone here consistently for the farmer's market and assisting with those events. Just to kind of highlight it for you, the department here consistently worked about five or six big events that happened over the weekend in the last five years and this year with the farmer's market, we've added twenty-two additional Saturdays to our lineup here. So it's a it's a weekly thing from May to September and that is increasing our load on the department. Another option here, as our part-timers turn over, you know, we're in the unique situation where we've kept our part-time employees here for quite a while, quite a few years, but we're likely in the situation where one or both of those positions are going to turn over within the next year to two years. At that point, my recommendation would be to convert one of the part-time positions to a full-time position and then switch to using seasonal part-time instead of year-round. Our peak season where we really need people is during the spring and summer and then in the in the slower months, our full-time people are more more than capable of handling everything that goes on in all the properties. As our admin assistant position, you know, our we have a person there set to retire in the next few years. I would like to reclassify that position as a recreation specialist position. It is a little more versatile, less in the office and more, I think, nights, weekends, events, out in the field. And then, of course, set our core service levels as we're going through this budget process, kind of as a partnership between, you know, the department and the town to make sure that everything we're doing is manageable long-term. So when we have new ideas or new initiatives, we really give them the due diligence and say, okay, can we can we operate as we are and add this or do we need to look at reductions in services? And that's okay, reducing services is not necessarily a bad thing. You know, you just have to kind of weigh both sides so that we we make sure everything we're doing is about quality over quantity. So some of those reductions could be, you know, concentrating solely on the farmer's market and our our core special events for the years and and discontinuing our programming efforts. Reducing the operating hours and time period for the splash pad, you know, right now that's going to run concurrently with the farmer's market once we turn it on this summer. So we're implementing some administrative controls to try and prevent a buildup in the park with excess people and not enough parking. But if we don't have, if we're, you know, if we don't have enough hours in the day to have it monitored, then we may need to look at reducing that. Also shrinking our available hours for rentals, reducing our event load, so that could possibly, you know, if we lose a person or we can't fill a part-time position, you know, we may have to reduce the frequency of the farmer's market and eliminate some of our seasonal events, of course, we've already discussed about outsourcing or contracting landscaping and maintenance. And the the last point I'm making here is, right now, if someone is out sick, one of my maintenance people or my part-timers, we have unsupervised part days. So that means that we don't have anybody there to, you know, if somebody comes in in the morning, I don't have anybody to check the restrooms or empty the trash at the end of the day and the next person isn't scheduled to come in until, you know, ten o'clock in in morning on Saturday, so sometimes we have these gaps in our service level and that's what I'm trying to eliminate. Trying to look at this from a holistic manner and say, okay, what do we want, what do we want to focus on, we want to make sure we meet council's priorities, we want to make sure we meet the community needs. But we can't do everything, so where do we put that focus? And if we increase some staffing or we keep staffing where it is and we outsource some things or reduce some of our services so that we can better provide for the community what they need. I think that's the end of my presentation, is that right, Marcia?
Yes.
All righty, Ashley, that was, yeah, that was a a lot, thank you very much, I know y'all are busy, so appreciate it, so any questions for Ashley?
Just me, ma'am, just remind me, Ashley, this is Brad, tell me your department staffing level, not who, but but what are the positions again?
So we have a director, an event coordinator, an admin assistant and one full-time maintenance person. And then we have two part-time employees.
Director, event coordinator, admin, full-time maintenance and what was that again?
Two part-time. And just a reminder, we're seven-day-a-week operation, so we have to cover, you know, Saturday and Sunday and the park at this time of year sundown is about seven thirty, but give it another few weeks and the sun, you know, people are out till eight thirty, nine o'clock out here, so. Got a lot of ground to cover.
Ashley, what does the admin person do that's different from the director?
So our administrative position here answers all the phone calls that come in, handles our online reservations and rentals, processes the payment, so every time a reservation is made online, it goes through our third-party processor and then that position actually inputs it into the accounting software and tracks the puts out the signage that we have every week that shows who has the reservation, when they're supposed to be there, makes those follow-up calls and handles everything that comes in as far as like paperwork for our purchases and our supplies that go in and out, that's what that that position does. And then, of course, assists with events, I mean, that that position also works weekends, shred day, all of our programs, you know, Stallings Fest, Christmas, et cetera.
And how active and supportive have the Parks and Rec committee members been for events this year with pandemic?
The committees have been have not been meeting at all this year, so we have not had any participation from committee members.
But in the past, is that not something that you have enjoyed having? The volunteers to work at the events too?
We, in the past, we've had volunteers at Stallings Fest, the park and rec committee has their own booth there, but as far as day-to-day operational items, volunteers do not augment the department in any way.
And Ashley, this is Brad, in a given normal year, what is the rental revenue for our spaces that we can reserve?
Oh, well, that varies on weather and a couple other factors, but I think if we go back, give me just a second. If I go back and look, we'd have to go back to twenty nineteen to see a really good revenue year with that, I want to say it's Marcia, help me, it's like ten grand maybe? Maybe a little more. We only charge.
Right around ten, I would think.
Yeah.
Right, and then how many states?
Just from renting shelter A and shelter D.
That's what I was gonna ask, how many shelters or what is rentable in our town, just two shelters, A and D?
Correct, the other spaces in the park are first come, first served, because they're not covered and, you know, people just kind of use the picnic tables as they want.
And then, Ashley, what did we count the attendance Saturday at farmer's market?
We did, I'm waiting on that report from Jessica at the county, she was the one tracking the numbers. But we got very positive reviews, we, three of our three of our vendors sold out before ten thirty in the morning and a couple of them actually told me they did better here at this market than they normally do on a Saturday in Monroe, so they're all very excited to come back and actually, we should have a few more vendors this weekend than we did last weekend. Just kind of, you know, it's going to vary week to week, ten to fifteen area and then whether or not we have a food truck. And then we will start offering live music the third Saturday of the month in June.
So we, how many vendors were this Saturday, ten to fifteen, is that what it was?
We had ten, we had ten this Saturday, yes.
And do you know which of the ten, the three vendors who ran out by ten thirty, do you happen to know who they were?
So our strawberry vendor sold out, we had a baker who made handmade baked goods and chocolates that sold out, we also had the lady with the pecans. And then there was a fourth one that came really close, she had her own bagged salads.
Okay.
And then the FFA from Sun Valley had to leave twice to go pick up more plants because they they were selling like crazy, so it was pretty successful, I I think everybody really enjoyed it. We had a steady crowd of people, I mean, I think I saw Steven, you were there at like nine thirty maybe, I mean, it was pretty early, but we had people there all the way until right until noon.
Yeah, my wife had a good time and she 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 wanted to buy strawberries and meat and then the guy ran out of well, he didn't have the cut she wanted, that's right, but he had, he was a very nice guy, so look forward to meeting him, so appreciate it. It's off to a good start, thank you. Any more questions for Ashley?
I just have one and it it probably is something that went over my head. What's an example of a programming effort when it says we could possibly discontinue programming efforts?
So the difference between programs and events, programs are usually no more than two to three hours long, so those are the things we did in the park, like the scavenger hunts. You know, the the kit pickups, the things that require yeah, the things that require staff to put a lot of time together during the week. When and so if we're working every Saturday for the farmer's market, we lose a workday during the week, so then we would lose that time to set up for those those type of activities. So those are more of a drop-in things that we really brought in during COVID, since we weren't able to do events.
Okay, that's kind of what I assumed it was, but I just wanted to be sure.
Hey, Ashley, I just wanted to say thank you, I know that you personally, I know, were out there both Saturdays and and they were pretty long hours and then with the shred event, it was actually just perfect weather. A couple of times I came by, you were out there and it was pouring down rain, so we we certainly do appreciate all the hard work that goes into the events and in in the park, thank you.
All righty, any other questions for Ashley? All right, anything else, Marcia, on park and rec we need to know?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, what's, all right, what what do we got next?
Notable item summary, since we've gone through the park and rec and public work Notable items summary. Since we've gone through the Park and Rec and public works, public works items are probably pretty fresh in our memory. But some of the items that, in each of the departments that we may want to discuss or remind the council of are the following. In general government, we had the demolition of the two properties that we own on Stallings Road, which is 325, 329. One of those properties is still renting. We get, I think it's like $850 a month for that property. So, I mean, that's a consideration so that we can, you know, possibly use those homes or convert those into other uses for the town over this next year. The front entrance of Old Town Hall, the doors, we were talking about actually making those more safe and putting the key fob entry into the building. It would replace the doors. One of the doors actually doesn't, it's not open during the day, and it would make it handicap accessible, et cetera. Economic Development Implementation Coordinator, that would be a position that's shared. It's like 10 hours a week. That would cost $20,000. And first, I should note, these items in red are ones that are not in our budget. The items in green are included in the budget we presented. Let's see. So we are on the F, DFI Downtown Feasibility Assessment Phase One. That's $75,000. That would actually, you know, obviously, we know what that is. So if we go forward with that, it's the cost of the town. Communication Specialist, which was gone over $75,000. And then some items that are actually related to the downtown center, which is the streetscape and downtown site control and implementation costs, while they're not in the budget, and we don't have any really solid estimates. Those are items that were council priorities to get this moving forward, the downtown. So we did include them on this notable items list. The police department, they are all included in the budget. It's pretty much standard things. The Lexi pole body cameras, or Lexi pole policy manual body cameras and the in-car camera replacement, those are contracts that we have. It's phased over five years. The drug forfeiture expenditures, we do that every year. We put in $25,000 and use that for those drug forfeiture funds that we have. They're restricted funds. And then obviously, the replacement of vehicles, the police replacement, that's in accordance with their policy of vehicles that have hit over 100,000 miles and are passed through useful life and safety to keep our police officers safe. In Transportation and Engineering, we have the Greenway signage at the Atrium Roundabout of estimate of 200,000. It is not in the budget. While we are looking at Atrium possibly paying some of those costs, that is an amount that, an estimate that we have to put a nice signage there in that area. Bypass landscaping, that's to be determined as far as how elaborate we want it to be, not included. And then the two things that are included, the update of the transportation plan, we put in $25,000. While that would cost more than $25,000, we are seeking supplemental funds with, possibly with CARPO for a planning grant that they offer. Palbeal, the road repairs, $388,700. And then it's been brought to our attention, to the town, that within our 50 miles, just covering a few, the .7 miles or .8 miles per year that we actually have some road repair, that it would take about 50 years for it to cycle back around. So there is opportunity here to put in the budget additional road repair work. And that depends on how much we want to go forward with and how much we would want to spend on those additional repairs. Any questions on these three departments?
Do we even have to look at like the gateway signage at Atrium? Because the last I saw, Atrium had lobbied the NCGA and they've got an 18-month-plus delay on doing any roadwork improvements, so it's kind of a moot point.
Yeah, well, in that situation, we may want to just make a motion to remove it, you know, or, you know, just phase it off to another year.
Council, I can speak to that a little bit. So I believe the bill that was in the legislature that got signed into law gives them the ability to tackle, to delay off-site improvements.
Yep.
For 18 months. And I believe this one, speaking, when I say this one, I mean the roundabout, I believe that is, that is not one of the areas that they're going to delay since it is a direct entrance.
Gotcha. Okay, I was under the impression, because it was off-site and because they were going to have to do a bunch of right-of-way purchases there, that was the main one they wanted to delay.
Let me, let me double-check on that to verify that. And can I follow up with you, sir?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on then, Public Works and Park and Rec. I'm just going to talk about what's in the budget, what isn't in the budget. As you know, the HVAC repairs and replacements, $20,000. That's in every budget, every year. We put that in there in case we have a unit that goes out. We had a couple of them go down a few years ago. And it was our decision, council's decision actually, to include those costs in upfront to cover that without having to do budget amendments. And then the reroute mower. So the tractor attachments, lift, and the additional staff, those are not in the budget. And obviously, the tractor attachments and the lift would depend on whether or not the maintenance staff was actually added. Park and Rec, the only thing included is the Vickery portion of the Blair Park Greenway. And Ashley brought up a lot of good items. Enhancements to Blair Mill Park for the food truck pad, the landscaping signage, private park enhancements, the part-time conversion, part-time to full-time, whenever we had a part-time position change, in other words, a retirement or just someone leaving. And then also that park management customer service position that we're lacking in that department. So all the red items there are not, not in our budget. Stormwater, we have two items there, the repairs, major and minor repairs. Those are in the budget. They're in it every year. So total, our total number of items on the notable items list is $2,158,000. Of that $2,158,000, $1,432,000 is in the budget. And the big numbers from, if you're looking at it, I mean, just on this one page here, you have $550,000 and about $250,000 right there. So that makes up the majority of it. And then on the previous slide, this, the PD department, and then the Palbeal money and that. So really, most of these are covered, but there's total unfunded of $725,600. And there's also a lot of TBDs in there as far as to determine the cost, which brings that $725,000 unfunded to probably about the same amount as funded. You know, if you're looking at it in a, you know, for downtown streetscape, we know that that's going to be in the hundred thousands in the site control and implementation costs. I mean, that's going to be a high number. Bypass landscaping, another high number. And the additional road repairs. So this number here is probably, you know, the unfunded is at least as much as the funded in this, on this slide, if we include those other costs. And at this point, we have $1,000 in contingency.
So kind of where we are. Marcia, Marcia, this may be for Alex or for Brian, but how are we to think about the right-of-way mowing between back of curb or roadway and sidewalk? That's a, that would be an upgrade in current service if, I see it there, of course, but the other option Brian gave us was to outsource that. If we don't do that, the position and the attachments, and we don't outsource it, is that maintaining the current level is what we're saying? We don't do that now.
Exactly.
So the pitch was to do it, upgrade a level of service for beautification. Either this is the lower amount here or an outsourced for several years. Is that what, is that how I'm thinking about that right away?
Correct. And that's keeping service levels where we are, you know. I mean, if we add these in, we did not put outsourced contracting costs that will be removed from the budget to do those services. We didn't put them in there. So this would be an add to the budget if you add these in. But if we don't add them in, we would also have to add in, if you want those services out, and we will have to get some, you know, we would have to add some contracting, contracting costs in order to cover that over this next fiscal year.
And then how are we also think about that in light of what our Parks Director said about Blair Mill Park taking six hours to mow and tying up resources? It felt like there was, I know they operate separately, separate budgets, but almost felt like they operate separately on different planets, meaning they have to ask for permission and send off. Is there, if this position is hired with this new equipment, does that make Blair Mill Park maintenance better or not really?
I'm going to say yes, but I want Ashley to answer that as well because she can tell you what her maintenance people do versus Brian's maintenance. I think she could explain it better than I.
Yeah, so we have a twofold issue here. One is just the total number of hours available to work for, you know, those different things. We have one full-time maintenance person in the park, and they, it takes about six hours to cut Blair Mill, and that's two people. Right now, that is one full-time person from Parks and Rec and one full-time person from Public Works who have been doing, combining together to do that work at Blair Mill. And then, of course, we cut Stallings Park as well. And so that takes a day, but that's one part-time person and one, and my full-time person that do that. And then you have Brian's full-time person that maintains Town Hall landscaping, and then they both do the roadways. If my, if the concern here was that we wanted Blair Mill, that the input I was getting is we wanted Blair Mill to be raised up a service level. We wanted it to look nicer than just a simple cut once a week. And so that's where we would be looking at the additional equipment, you know, between the two of our departments and possibly additional person that would help out with that. Because right now, basically, you're right, we do operate independently, but when we have to work together, both departments are working on one goal, and only one thing can happen at one time because we only have two mowers. So if both mowers are at Blair Mill Park for six hours, that's all that gets done that day for both departments. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just kind of building on this there. I mean, is there any big, big-hit items that, that we're contracting out? Kind of a smaller subset of what you do, but maybe a big-hit item like mowing a park or something like that there? I'm just thinking out loud here.
Well, right now, we don't contract out any of those services. That's all in-house.
Okay. I mean, I was just curious if that, if there's big items like that there that could help. So they're not doing all the maintenance. They're just hitting some, some big tracks that take a lot of time to do.
Well, so we do contract out, like when we had our lights switched out in the park, the restroom renovations, those items we do contract out because they're above a skill level that we, you know, you need qualified tradespeople to do those. We do contract those out. But as far as the grass cutting, that's all, that was all taken in-house about three years ago.
Okay.
I want to say.
And hey, this is Brian. Just to add to that, I know what you're saying. Like if we could contract out some of that, I know for us to make it beneficial on our end to open up time, like I was saying, it would have to be like contracting out that portion of the, what they're talking about by the hospital, that landscaping right there, that whole intersection. And I know the quote I had on just that was like 30,000 to 40,000, and then roadside is about 20,000. So, you know, that would be the thing that I would have to look at contracting out to free us up some time. And, you know, we're already close to 60 grand right there to contract that out. And, you know, if we went after a new employee, that's obviously cheaper, just kind of in my opinion. And we get more services out of having the employee versus, you know, it's kind of what I was saying with like the landscaping, that's all you're giving is that one particular service.
Gotcha. Thanks, man. That helps me.
Thank you.
All righty, what's next, Marcia?
Okay, I feel like we're going to be coming back to this slide because we haven't made any decisions on anything, obviously. And I think a lot of this has to do with, you know, obviously, where the capital or the revenue neutral rate falls, since we have a $1,000 contingency at this point. Capital Project Fund. Town has several of them. We've got one for the Stallings Park. We have one for Potter Road Pleasant Plains. And we have one for the Newtown Hall and Public Works Building. The only one that's really active this year would be Potter Road Pleasant Plains. As you know, we got the update for the construction of this project well over budget as far as it went over budget for right-of-way and construction costs, estimated construction costs. And we're still, everyone's like, I think, waiting to hear back to see if we apply for the, obviously, the CARPO project shortfall funding. And I think it's, we're not going to have any answer until late June or July if it's awarded. I know Mayor has been engaging with state elected officials for other funding sources as well. I'm looking at this, I haven't, I do not have any costs in this, in this budget that has been presented for this project. It would, right now, in the prior years, we had allocation or appropriations, I should say, from fund balance going, being appropriated for the costs on this project. But without us having any idea which direction we're going to be following, I believe that our best move is to not budget anything because this project will require a capital project budget amendment as well as a fiscal '22 budget amendment. So I think once we have more information, find out where our money's coming from and the costs associated with this project, I think we should just leave it at zero for this budget, the draft budget. And then, like I said, do our amendments when we have our, in next fiscal year, when we receive the information. And I guess the, you know, if this, I'd like to, you know, open it up for questions here. If, you know, if I'm not thinking correctly on this, let me know. But I just feel like this is the best route to take at this point in time.
Well, Marcia, I agree with you. There's no way we can allocate any funds until we know what we're dealing with. So to defer it, to me, I agree with you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yeah, defer.
I'm the totally, I'll say, I'll play devil's advocate. I prefer for us to move forward. I mean, we've promised the people that we would do it years ago. I mean, I kind of feel like if we don't get this money, what are we going to do? Are we just going to push it off to 2024 like we talked about? I mean, I just, my concerns here is that we told people, we gave them a date we were going to start, and now we're, we've backed away from that commitment. And 2024 seems like a long way away for something that we told them we were going to start last year in August, and we gave them a definitive timeline. But that's just me.
Well, I agree with you, Stephen, you know, but these things are out of our control. We told Town of Stallings we'd start, Old Monroe Road would start construction on 2017, and here it is, 2017. And here it is twenty twenty-one and they, they haven't, you know, moved a shovel for the dirt. So, you know, that was out of our control. So.
But, but we manage Potter and Pleasant Plains. So that, I mean, there, there is a factor of that that is in what, in our control, right?
Well, the factor that we can't magically, uh, come up with three million dollars is the, uh, part we can't control.
A- a- and, and I, I understand that. I'm just, uh, I, I kind of, again, I think it might be a good workshop to understand how we were May of last year telling people this project was going to start in August. And we felt like we had the funds and capability to start in August. And now we feel like, you know, it could be three or four years from now before we start. It sounds to me like there was a missed opportunity at best to, uh, say that we were going to start in August twenty twenty, May of last year, if we knew that we were going to be over budget last year. Or either, you know, there's something that's fundamentally changed between May of last year and, and now that, uh, it seems like we just as a learning opportunity that we understand how things might have gotten out of balance there.
Well, I certainly understand you. We need, definitely need to understand, uh, how all this happened. So when somebody does ask us, you know, we have a, uh, you know, an adequate explanation. So I certainly agree with you.
Hey, Mayor, Councilman Ayers, uh, going a little bit off topic here, but I, I think it's in the context of this conversation. So, um, one of the things, uh, and I talked about earlier today was coming up with a, uh, you can share across that and council levels, uh, with members of the public of the situation and, and what's going on. And the last time we talked, the council seemed a little bit hesitant in kind of communicating, uh, proactively, given the, uh, number of balls that were still up in the air uh, with this shoe, this issue. But, uh, if the board's okay with it, we'd still like to develop a, a uniform communication that we can share with everybody so that everybody's, uh, communicating the same information to the public. Would that be okay?
Yeah, the more information, the better on this. So a timeline of, you know, the, the whole process would be helpful.
Great. We'll get together a, uh, uh, just kind of a standardized communication, um, just kind of explaining the situation.
Alrighty, any other questions on this, uh, topic?
And Alex, I know that that's going to be one that comes up because it's already surfaced. Is why, why were we told that it was going to start in August twenty twenty? And we were still being told that in May of last year? Or until we got that letter from the DOT?
Alrighty, Marcia, what's next?
Okay, next we have the CMI IP and I'm going to switch screens on you here. I can find it. I think that's the right one though. Okay, is it the CMI IP by any chance? Is that what you see? I can't tell what you can see.
Yeah, this is still the notable items.
Okay. Let's give the new share. Do this. Okay.
There we go.
Alrighty, um, on this screen, the items in the red down on twenty twenty-two are estimated costs that are not included in our budget. Now, we may have gotten some, some actual, you know, engine era quotes and things for them, but obviously we just don't have them in the budget. Uh, the blue costs are delayed to out years. Um, and some of these costs, you know, we've carried from year to year and we, you know, you'll notice some of the items from notable items on here. Well, actually all the notable items, unless it has to do with an employee, like where you add an employee, that's not a capital maintenance and infrastructure item. So they're not on here. So anything that has to do with capital or capital improvements, it is here. So I'm just going to quickly get down, um, this list and, uh, the one thing that Ashley did mention, the one point nine million dollars that's been on there. It's been called the barn and everything. I left it there. Council delayed it to out years, uh, last year. Um, you know, so it hasn't changed, but it's in there. There's still a need. Uh, I feel, you know, i- i- at some point it will be addressed. Uh, the front entrance to the Old Town Hall, we had that in there. That's one of the notable items that we have it in twenty twenty-two. The two demolitions for the Stallings Pro- Road Properties, they are in there at twenty thousand dollars each. The Prevert Road Park, uh, playground is, is, uh, not in the budget, as you can see, at fifty-five thousand five hundred. And then at Stallings Municipal Park, we have three hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of changes here. We have a sprinkler system that was delayed. Ashley suggested, uh, twenty twenty-three, a ten thousand dollar, uh, for park signage. And then there's two other items, these wifi items. If you add wifi, you can add a lot of capability to your park. Um, the camera system would require it. So one kind of goes on the other. We do not have an estimate for those yet, but those are two items that we feel, felt very strongly about that we wanted them on the potential projects. And we will, um, get costs and estimates for those if, uh, if council, uh, would like that on here. But we're looking at twenty twenty-three as far as implementation of those items. Uh, and then the two like, two playground replacements, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand. And we have Blair Mill Park, six hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of, uh, items here. Um, the site specific plan, that was, that's not, we don't have any cost or anything. The engineering, five hundred thousand dollars, um, that hasn't been addressed. Uh, we haven't done that. It was pushed off into out years. Landscaping, all these items, landscaping, signage, uh, the food truck pad and utilities on the north side. And I see signage is in there twice and I apologize. Um, signage and storage. So we can take one of these out. We'll just delete it right now as a matter of fact. Okay. So six hundred thousand, not five hundred and ten. So those items are all in red, not in the budget, but can be considered for twenty twenty-two. Uh, the Blair Mill Parkway or Greenway, I'm sorry, bickery portion, we do have that in the budget. It is in black for twenty twenty-two. So that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is in the budget. Then we have the implementation of Blair Mill Park, the wetlands, the park area, the water lab area. Those are estimates based on several years ago. They have not been assigned to any particular fiscal year. We can remove them. We can keep them, you know, whatever council's wishes are. Uh, the central Stalling Spines, um, you can see that, that's another, uh, extension of that, uh, Greenway, I guess. The t- wait, the central spine is Town Hall and Municipal Park, the Stallings Municipal Park. Um, we do have some money going in there for engineering in twenty twenty-four. That was from a last year, um, decision and it was placed in that year. Then the Blair Mill to Stevens Mill Crossing, that, that would cost two point three million and we don't have it, uh, scheduled out to any of the years. Move on to sidewalks. Uh, we have Lawyer's Road. The ones that are, I'm going to do it this way first. These accounted for in the Greenway here, the Greenway Spines. Um, these are the costs for those sidewalks, uh, which is a total of one point six five million. And they are part of the Greenway Spine. The Lawyer's Road to A and to B are not. And those two are both about three hundred and forty thousand dollars each. Those are the only ones that we actually have a, a placeholder in for twenty twenty-five, the Lawyer's Road ones. Then we get into equipment. This is where you're going to see some repetitiveness, uh, with the budget. All these items in black here are in the budget. The computer replacement annually at fifty thousand, the fleet replacement, now we're onto PD. Fleet replacement, Lexipool, body cameras, in-car cameras and the, the one thing that was added, the portable message board for traffic control, that was another out-year item. It's, it's slated for twenty twenty-three in the proposed, um, CMI IP. Public Works, uh, we added this line, the building and grounds contingency as the building ages. We're going to have some, uh, building and grounds repairs that we'll have to start making. We decided in the out-years, maybe twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty-six, we add ten thousand dollars a year for those. The HVAC replacements, uh, and repairs, we put twenty thousand dollars in a year. That was something council did last year. The smart meter, uh, installation that was delayed to twenty twenty-three. The zero-turn mower is in the budget for fifteen. And then the tractor attachments lift, um, and vehicle replacement, those are in the out-years. Um, and you can see there, you know, ten thousand, ten thousand and then the forty thousand for their replacement out in twenty twenty-five. Planning and zoning, the only thing we have for them is out in twenty twenty-five. It's really a, uh, vehicle replacement for the, uh, why can't I think of the position? Words are not coming to me right now. Uh, Colleen. For the work that Colleen, yes. So the work that's done there. So her truck is getting pretty old. So we will need a replacement at that point in time out in, uh, twenty twenty-five. And then, um, park and rec, uh, pickup truck and trailer, we're talking at, uh, fifty thousand dollars adding that so that they don't have to rely on the public works equipment. They can actually be doing things, um, moving their own things back and forth for events and things and not have to find out if they have, they can borrow the truck. Cause at this point they only have the van and the gator. And then park and rec permanent structure for Farmer's Market, that's a to-be-determined cost and we're talking about maybe twenty twenty-four for that. Okay, so transportation's a big one. It's four point five seven six million. Uh, this has to do with street scape and signage. Uh, the one thing we have budgeted this year is the signage for, um, just your regular street signs. The, um, Stallings emblem on the, the road name. So we put five thousand in the budget for continued replacement of those. And then we have two hundred thousand dollars in for the gateway signage at Atrium Roundabout. We talked about that a few minutes ago. And then we also have, uh, some of the other corridors, uh, Iowa Corridor, uh, Old Monroe Road and Stallings Elementary. Those are carryos- carryovers from prior year. And, uh, we have estimated costs and there's no assigned year as far as when we plan to implement. The downtown area, uh, we have feasibility assessment, phase one and phase two. Phase one, we have it on the CMI, or not the CMI IP, notable items list at seventy-five thousand dollars for this year. It is not in the budget, but we do have it on there. So we would like to move forward with it. So altogether we have, um, let's see, street resurfacing and sidewalks and power bill, um, two million dollars. That's about four hundred thousand dollars each year, um, to go out. And if we want to put additional street resurfacing, this is a place that we can bump this up. Um, not necessarily on the power bill part of it, but obviously if, um, other funds are available or we use, you know, current year revenues to replace that as well, we would add another, um, additional amount to this on a separate line. And then we have Potter Roads Pleasant Plains. I blanked that out for, for the purposes of, um, well, pretty much because of the last slide, we went through that. And then the update on the master plan. So if we look at total general government CMI P items and costs, um, we're looking at like almost twenty-one million dollars. And then stormwater has an additional one point seven million over the next, um, five years. And that's mainly your major projects and, you know, what, did not carry over there. Your major projects of, um, major projects, minor projects, that's each year's expenditure expected on the out-years. And then the, the things that we've added, the line maintenance and the street sweeping. So it looks like the CMI IP will have a value of about twenty, twenty-two million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand for, um, the, a five-year lookout. And if we remove those big items that aren't on here, I don't have a total for that, but, oh, actually I can do this. Hold on. If I just add up the numbers that we have here, one hundred thousand, I have to put in there. We're looking at general government of six million seventy-three thousand and then stormwater of these numbers here. Uh, that's seven million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. So about thirteen, seven million and six million, be thirteen million dollars over the next, um, five years.
Mar- Marcia, just, just so that I understand, and I just want to make sure this is correct. Two thousand twenty-one is the budget year we're currently in. Twenty-two is the budget to work on. Okay. I, I just, it's what I thought, but I just want to confirm.
I may have included that in those numbers, but there's not much in that column. I said thirteen million total, so take off a million. So these numbers here would be what we're looking at. So we're talking about, um, actually it's six million, six seventy-eight, six fifty. So that's over the next five years. And then obviously if we add to this or make changes, add other projects in, it's gonna, it'll change it quite a bit. What we did last year is we took each item and council either gave it a year in order, like this first one, um, like the new community building. Let's just say council decided that to put it in twenty twenty-six. I would add that to twenty twenty-six. Those items that are not in here, um, that don't have any, any assigned value to it. Um, we can put it, we could actually add another column into this and put out here, you know, beyond twenty twenty-seven and beyond, you know, add another column for that. And what we did, we went item by item and, and went through and did that. That's not something that has to be adopted with the, with the, um, with the budget, but it's something that, what I'm thinking about, you know, proposing is that we finalize the budget, adopt the budget, and then the five-year plan is updated with the final, with the budget numbers and the CMI IP gets updated as well. And then we, you know, do, e- either in July or August, have those approved by council. But that's, you know, something how you want to move forward.
That, that's the way we've done it in the past. Let's, let's take care of the line item budget first and then, uh, we'll see what we have left over and, uh, but this gives us a blueprint. So that's why I agree with you on that. Any other comments on that though? All right, uh, is that it, Marcia?
No.
Oh, okay.
We got revenue. We're getting into the meat of it now.
All right.
We're getting into, uh, unless, you know, unless I, you know, we've run out of time, I can certainly, uh, I can certainly stop at any time, but I think that
No, we need to. Yeah, keep going. If, if whatever you got, the revenue part.
Okay. Um, this is the revenue part. And I just want to point out quickly, we talked about this in the beginning and Mayor, you weren't at the first meeting. So just like to throw these slides back up here. The next two slides really show you the impact of the revenue neutral late rate on the town's five-year forecasting model. Um, if we use our, you know, we, we put in the budget, the revenue neutral rate and we built a balanced budget based on that. If we, and that left only a thousand dollars contingency. And you saw the items that are on notable items and the, and the, uh, CMI IP that the town has for out-years. And you, you know, in this, when we set this rate this year, it's really going to be a rate that we'll probably keep over the next years. Obviously you can increase at any point in time, but I think to decrease it and then increase it and, you know, I mean, it's, it's totally, you know, dependent on, we have to look at what our future spending is and try and figure out where we fall in that, in that mix there. So, um, let's go to this slide. So let's go to this slide. What I'd like to, and I'll make this bigger so everyone can see.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, so this slide shows, I'd like to point out, this is using the revenue neutral tax rate. This is the shortfall we have just for this fiscal year '22. It's 471,000. This is just revenues over expenditures and excludes your debt service payment. It doesn't have any of the notable items that were on budgeted, so we're not even getting to that portion of it. We're just looking at their costs that we have in the budget, revenue minus their expenses. We have 471,800. The reason we have that deficit in this year is it's so big is because we have that $550,000 in the budget for the Greenway, and it's coming out of fund balance. And it's, it will be appropriated funds. Appropriated funds, while they are considered kind of, they're kind of revenue, it is revenue on a, on some level, but it's not additional revenue. So really, if you're looking at, we're trying to find the effect on our fund balance based on the revenues we will take in for that year minus the expenses. So that appropriation isn't in the revenue number. So I just wanted to kind of explain that first. Okay, so we have that 471,800 deficit. The next year, we were positive, we're going up a little bit there, we get up to 178. But when you look at the amounts that we're pulling out for the debt service payments, we're back down to that bottom line where we're a negative 840,800, a negative 258, a negative 223, a negative 188, a negative 151. That's what our forecast look. And while they're going in the right direction, that's not, this is covering bare minimum, really. I mean, our current level, I shouldn't say bare minimum, our current level of services. And not putting much in there for additional items that may come up or projects that the town wishes to proceed on. So look at this bottom line here and look at that 151 out on the right side and look at the next slide. This is what we had in the most recent five-year forecast. We had a deficit of 51,766. And it's three times what we had, you know, while it's only, you could say, well, it's only $100,000. It's three times what we projected, you know, based on, you know, just using year-over-year expenditures and raising them. I think it's clear from these pictures that if we want to grow the town, pushing that rate down really low, the tax rate itself is really going to put the town in a position where we're going to be eating fund balance. I mean, we're going, if you want to proceed with projects, you're going to have to find additional funding or we'll be eating, you know, going dipping into fund balance to make those projects happen. But that's, this plan will be updated, the thing that will happen. I'm planning on updating this after the budget's adopted. We'll incorporate the new CMIIP. And then we, July, August timeframe, we approve it. Do I have any questions on this? Okay.
Marsha, just.
So let's, okay, sorry.
Is there, how hard would it be to show kind of the difference, if you will, between the last couple pages you showed us and the last couple slides that you showed us based on the current rate instead of a net neutral rate?
Well, the first year, there is a, there's a slide here, let's look at that. So here is the calculation of the rate. The tax levy, if we keep it at .166, the tax levy's $4.2 million. If council keeps the rate of .215, the tax levy for the next year would be 5.4 million. The difference between those two is $1.2 million and, you know, it's over 1.2 million. So that number would not be negative in each of the years.
Gotcha, I mean, that's good enough for me, thanks.
Okay. And then, you know, for purposes of analysis and which way we would like to move, I said, you know, that there's about 1.2 million, which makes sense because there's a drop of almost four or five points, actually. Each of those points, point zero one, is worth about 253,161. So five times that would give us our 1.2, 2-plus million dollars, the difference. You know, so if it falls into each, each one cent change will produce $253,000 of additional revenue.
But if I may, the slide before, though, was without any of those additional items in it and were already negative, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
Can you go back to the initial first slide, though? Not that one.
This one?
Yeah, that one.
Or the one with the?
Yeah, the one, yeah, that one. So you're saying, looking at the first line, general fund revenue forecast this year was 6.9 million. And then with the new revenue neutral rate, it goes down to 6.6. So how's that, how's that revenue neutral? I thought revenue neutral means we would bring in the same amount of revenue.
Well, this forecasted revenue has different things in it as well. We had some contributions come in and things like that. So that's why that revenue is kind of a little funky there. It takes out that, those items that aren't going to occur the following year. In this number, we had $250,000 worth of grants, or actually it's $260,000. You know, we had grant money come in. We don't have grant money projected to come in these years.
Yeah, we don't know, yeah, it could come in, we don't know that.
It could, exactly. You know, especially if we get the Carphone money. I mean, that would change it significantly, too, but you're going to spend, the Carphone money you're going to spend, so it's not going to really impact this five-year forecast. Because what you take in, you're going to spend. So that piece of it, while it's important to get it, it would definitely offset most of the expenses. If anything, it's going to add to the expense line, not the, you know, I mean, it will, it will definitely, there will be more expenses on the P3 intersection than we will get back in revenue.
Marsha, didn't you also say, though, when you've talked about this in the first meeting, that that neutral rate is adjusted by 1.4% for the growth rate?
Well, that is, that's what's called the revenue neutral rate. Hang on, let me get to that. This one. The revenue neutral, well, it's not, this is actually the revenue neutral rate. But to get to that, you adjust this number by the average growth rate, which is 1.4%, which gives us the 1 point, or 0.66% or 1, 0.166. So that takes this rate here, which gives you the same revenue year-over-year, and adjusts it by this little bit of growth.
So did your five-year projections include a growth rate?
Yes, that's an additional growth rate. They have 2.88%, I believe. It's on one of those slides, like I say. It's the five-year plan, where we at? Yes, revenue forecast is conservatively based on historical data and assume the 2.88% would account for any new buildings, new construction year-over-year. Expenditures are forecasted to increase 2.84. Now, the one thing I did on the expenditures, too, while forecasting these expenditures, this is not a growth of 2.84 because I took away the 550,000 we were going to, out of this number. I took that out and then I actually included or bumped that rate up for the following year based on, you know, excluding that, the park and rec expenditure.
What's the difference between this one, when you say it's the most recent approved plan versus the other one that has the $800,000, 800,000?
It's the, if you look at the, it's revenue. Look at the, I had the wrong one up when I was talking. Because if you look at the expenditures, this 7.5 million, it actually drops in the next year because I took that Greenway money out, thinking that, you know, you're not, I didn't want to leave it in there year-over-year and escalate it.
Okay. So I see the revenue is 6.6 million, so on the next slide, it's 6.8.
Yes.
So what's the difference there? When you say approved, most recent approved plan, where, what is that coming from?
That was from last year, that was from last fiscal year.
Well, I mean, what rate would we be at, 6.8, would that be 21 and a half cents?
Yes, but it's not taking into consideration the growth. This is before the revaluation was done. This is all, this is printed last year, this is what we approved last, it had none of that in there, you know, the revaluation or anything. This is just reiterating what we had in there last year and approved.
So the number on the previous, the number on the previous slide could change, too, because we don't know the new evaluation of all the property?
Well, we have the revaluation rates, and that's another consideration when you're deciding what rate we want to actually approve for council or for the next year. If, in fact, we look at the calculation, if we have people that appeal this number, and this is our assessed value, if we have people that appeal it and it goes down, you're taking this revenue and dividing it by the, you know, you're trying to get to this tax rate. So normally, it's this times the tax rate gives you revenue. So you're taking the revenue and dividing it by this base and getting a tax rate. If this goes down, this revenue is not going to change, this number here, that you're, the top number. That's what we got in fiscal '21, that's what the assessed rate is. That won't change for next year. But if this number goes down based on appeals, our revenue won't be as high using that 1.66. It won't be this high, we won't get 4.2 million. Because appeals will drop your rate. I mean, it'll increase your rate, I'm sorry. Appeals will increase your revenue neutral tax rate. That's why a lot of people won't go to the revenue neutral rate because they know that there's going to be some appeals. So you want to probably go above that just because it's, you know, you know you're going to have some people complaining that my property's not worth this much, and they will win an appeal. And their property value goes down, and then your revenue neutral rate should have been higher than what this rate is right now. We're going on the best information we have. You know, the county said this is our new assessed value, so that's what we're using.
Do you know when the county is finalizing things? So we got the 2.5 from the county, assessed value?
Yes, sir, yes.
All right, thanks. I'm getting my calculator.
That came in the mail, official letter, it's final. We got our tax levy value for next year. I mean, they sent that out, just, it was April, around April 15th.
Well, that's over a 30% increase, so I'll, it's probably accurate, ma'am, thank you.
So where we're going with this, the next steps and kind of what we need to do. Our proposed budget was prepared using that .166 and excludes over like $725,000 of unfunded projects just from the notable item spreadsheet. If we, here's the, here's the $1.2 million higher. If the council chooses to keep the current rate, it creates an additional $1,235,600 in revenue each year. That's in every tax year. And obviously, it would go up from there. Current operations are covered in the proposed '22 budget using the revenue neutral tax rate. But this really needs no additional funding for capital items or growth of the town services in the future. And if we try to scale our operations with the community growth and expectations, we're not going to get there using, you know, if you don't, if you're starting out with a negative number already, we won't be able, unless we eat, and like I said, unless we go into fund balance. So at this point, I'm really asking, I'm requesting, I mean, staff is requesting council direction. And really, we need to come up with a tax rate to use in this budget, I think, and then go back to the list of items and say, okay, these are yeses, these are no's. How do we want to move forward? Because the notable item list and the tax rate are two things that are going to drastically change the proposed budget that we have right now. So I'm just asking council for guidance on where we think that tax rate should be and, you know.
Well, tonight, you know, tonight, I don't, I mean, we can all give our opinion, but we're down David and Brad, so we're missing two people. So we got another meeting on May 10th, but just a little bit of my comments. Keeping the tax rate at 21 and a half would mean that that's a 4.9 cents tax increase on our citizens. That's, that's the only way I look at it. We had, when we knew, when we funded the town hall, renovate the new town hall, we knew things were going to be tight for a few years, and now they are tight. So that's come, you know, that truth is now a reality. So, and I think we need to keep that in mind, council, when we're making decisions, that we made a decision to spend, buy, spend a lot of money to build a new town hall for some additional space for our operations, and we've done that, and we've added the Public Works Building. And so now, we knew it was going to be tight, and now it is. And so it was time for us to tighten our belts and get through that period of time where we pay it off, and then things will be a little bit more relaxed. So, second thing is, we got to find out quickly, that 4.1 million that the federal, I can't remember what the name of it is, but the rescue money or operator, we need to find out quickly what the use of that is, what uses we can do with that money. Because that's going to impact my decision on what I'm going to support in this budget. You know, if we can use it on infrastructure, you know, we certainly can start helping out with the 3P project and some of this other stuff. And then the third thing, as far as tightening our belt, you know, a lot of big-ticket items around downtown and, you know, we just might have to put things off until, you know, we're in a better position. You know, I know we got a lot of money in the bank, but that can go quickly. If we're dipping into it according to those numbers that Marsha showed us, you know, it was 800,000 one year and then, you know, 200, 200, so now you're looking at 2 million in just a few years. So that's my, that's my two cents worth. So anybody else like to, like I said, Marsha, I don't think we can give you any definitive answer tonight. I think May 10th, we need to be prepared to answer all those questions for you. My suggestion would be you prepare a budget on .166 and maybe .18. That's, you know, maybe something we can look at, but that would be my recommendation. You know, the revenue neutral rate is .166, so I think we need to see a budget, a line item budget, you know, based on that. All right.
And that's what, that's what's been, that's what you have at this point.
Yeah, and we, and then we need to see the line item budget, you know, like we do every year, you know, the big spreadsheet, so.
Yeah. And I can send that out. I mean, I've got, maybe in the meantime, I do those two scenarios and send it out to council.
Right.
And then we can, you can, you can see what the residual changes, well, I say residual. Residual to me is the contingency. That changes, that number will change, and that'll be the number that you have to use on those other items that if you choose to, you can. Or if we want to keep it and have it for fund, adding to fund balance, that's an option as well. But I'm just trying to get, I'm telling you, at this point, I'm kind of at a stopping point because I don't, you know, we've given you the data. I can, I can do some scenarios for you, obviously. And then we, you know, we take the next step and, you know, because we're, we're probably, we have to, and I don't know this date off the top of my head, because I don't have the budget in front of me, the budget schedule. Erin, do you know when we have to publish the budget for, in the paper? There's a date coming up, it's in.
Well, there's not, it's all based on when we're going to have our public hearing. So if the council plans their public hearing, the first meeting in June, I believe that's June the 14th, then we have to. then we have to publish it, you know, way before that, not way before that, two, three weeks before that. So putting it in the paper, you know, late May.
Well, yeah. And let's, let's go ahead and, you know, you know, historically, we've always done it on the last meeting in June. So June twenty first is when, you know, that's the date we'll vote on the budget.
We had the public hearing on that first meeting though. We still had the public hearing. You can still have changes at that point, you know.
Marcia, could you pull up the budget, Marcia, could you pull up the budget schedule, please? The one we've got? Let's, that should give us some context and we can, we can make alterations from there as needed.
And just real quick, what was the difference between what's in the budget currently? And what, what's the extra that's been asked for? Do we have that right off the top of somebody's head?
Like seven hundred thousand, wasn't it? Seven hundred twenty five thousand, six hundred?
Seven hundred twenty five thousand.
Yes. The unfunded portion.
Marcia, I know we could do this ourselves if we were adding two hundred and fifty three thousand, one sixty one for each penny. But I'd like to see a couple of scenarios of the impact with different rates other than the revenue neutral and the current rate. You know, you don't have to do every penny, but could you do a couple of those for us by our next meeting? So we could see what maybe a two cent reduction would be or a three cent as opposed to taking it all the way to sixteen?
Well, that's, that's pretty much why I gave you that one cent number. Cause the only thing that, seeing that rate that it's going to do is it will add to the revenue of Advalorm and motor vehicle, because they're both taxed at this, at this rate. It will add revenue on those two line items. And it'll add revenue. So it'll drop into that contingency. You know, you'll have a higher contingency. So if we drop it one, we would get, gain an additional two hundred and fifty three thousand. If we drop the two, it would be five hundred and, what did I say? Five hundred and six thousand extra in the, in that line. So it kind of gauges it, but I will, I'll show you that. I, I mean, I can do this.
So long story short, if we wanted to, everything that was asked for in the budget currently, we would really need to be three higher than net neutral. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Which would still be below twenty. I mean, it's, it would, three above that would be one point nine, one point nine six. And I mean, maybe you get a one point five or something.
Well, I mean, the, the second question that I have is that we're adding each year, to me, it feels like we're adding infrastructure. We're adding infrastructure at the park. We're adding infrastructure at the two other parks potentially. We're, we're, we're adding Greenway infrastructure. Can you help me understand in just a two sentences? This, how does added infrastructure maintenance get reflected back into the budget? Cause I, I guess I don't, it's hard for me to see that based on, I mean, I can see the new stuff we're adding, but I can't really easily see in the budget where the maintenance of that new stuff, because I see it as it's stuff that's going to get added each year or build up over years.
Hey, council members, I, I can probably help with that a little bit. In, in the past, what we've done is we, the town's just essentially absorbed, absorbed the cost, right? We, we've tried to continue on maintenance wise, for the most part, using existing resources. As, as we grow, as the town grows and we strive to keep our operations level with our growth, I think that becomes harder and harder. Or what I, I, I call kind of in the awkward teenage years of growth as, as a town, right? Teenagers are, and we've all, some of us have been parents to teenagers. And we all know you want to buy a pair of shoes that doesn't fit perfectly right when you get it, right? You want to get it a little bit bigger so they can grow into it, but at the same time, not too big to where they're falling over ourselves. So the question of scalability, the crux of your question, it's a tough one. It's a challenging one. For the infrastructure we're adding right now, it's largely going to be kind of parks right now for like greenways, things like that. In addition to sidewalks. And Ashley, I believe there was a part of the Greenway plan that called for adding staff based on the Greenway that's, that's added. Do you recall that formulation off the top of your head?
Um, I, I don't recall it right off the top of my head, but the, the crux of it was we were fine at our current staffing level unless we built another, a park or absorbed another park. Or as we start to take in the developed greenways that are, through the development agreements, as those are built by the developers, they're then turned over to the town for maintenance. And so that was like the linchpin in, in there. We were fine at the current levels until we built a new project. And whether that's the Greenway coming in or outfitting Privet Park or Blair Mill Park or whatever, that's when we would start to need to convert or add more staff or outsource the maintenance.
I mean, that also goes for like the streetscape. I mean, if we were to build the streetscape, it would continue, I mean, it would need maintenance also. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just curious about how that figures into the budget. Cause it feels like, like you said, Alex, it feels like we're starting to get to a point where that won't be easily to, as easy to manage with the budgets that we have now, we would have to start line item, maintenance items on a yearly basis.
Absolutely.
Thanks, man.
Well, just to, so I'm clear, the, Marcia, you referred to the fee in Lua Parkland money as restricted, but it's not restricted just to the Greenway. We could use that for any infrastructure improvements in either park, right?
Correct. It's just restricted for park use. So it is considered, it's restricted fund balance.
So we may want to make some priority decisions with regard to how we use that money. I mean, it's in there as though it's a given that we're going to do the Greenway. But I think some of the other things that are needed for the parks, and I frankly would rather see those things funded than building a Greenway that we already know a lot of people in Vickery don't want it.
Alex and Marcia, is this presentation, have y'all sent it to us already or?
No, I have not. I will send this out as well as the, the line of budget here tonight.
Great. And then I agree with Linda, if you could do some scenarios that, you know, eighteen and nineteen cents. And I know we just add two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars to it, but you know, maybe that's easy. But, but after I see the line item, I can, you know, that helps, that always helps me.
Okay.
So looking, so looking at the schedule, so we have something scheduled for May tenth, tentative schedule for May twenty fourth. And then we'll have the public hearing on June seventh and then vote on it on June twenty first is what I have in my mind.
Marcia, will you please bring up the budget schedule?
It's a, it is up. I'm sorry. I, I don't, I'm not sharing that screen.
There you go.
Okay.
From May tenth is the next one, May twenty fourth and then yeah, June fourteenth and June twenty eighth. Yeah. I had, I had the dates wrong. So, yeah, that's.
So the important date here that we kind of go around, when we advertise it in the paper, we send it to the paper this date. And that's just that they have time to print it, but it doesn't get advertised until Friday, the twenty, May twenty eighth. So at that point in time, we have to have a draft ordinance and a draft budget, the budget message done and on file with the clerk so that if someone called, that they could get a copy of it or see it. So.
And, and as you stated, Marcia, that's not the final, you know, draft, I mean, the final budget.
Right.
It can change between May and June twenty eighth. But, so we got two more meetings before May twenty eighth, the tenth and the twenty fourth. So we should be able to finalize it by then. If we don't, we'll call another meeting between, before the twenty eighth.
You're correct. I'd point out that I owe y'all a draft budget with the budget letter and everything on the seventeenth. So it would be helpful to have some sort of direction on May tenth on a couple of the major decisions. Don't have to.
No, no doubt about it. Yep. Counsel, come prepared on May tenth to make some hard decisions. All right, Marcia, Alex, anything else?
I do have one other thing here. Our fee schedules for twenty twenty two. During Ms. Harris' presentation, she made some recommendations to change some fees. One of which was a revision for the plan review, or plat reviews, no, re, I can't even read that. Revisions, I should say. It went from, the fee went from two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars. All the ones that are highlighted are ones that she's recommending changes to. And the next one down is it was at a hundred and fifty dollars for the legal, the appeal request. And we've been galling, as you, as you know, we've been, the appeals have been very excessive. So we bumped it from a hundred and fifty dollars fee up to five hundred dollars fee. And if our legal costs exceed the fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars, we were going to charge the applicant even more. You know, for the, for that, for the fees that the town was incurring. The variance request went from three hundred to, let's see, doesn't say what it was before, so I can't tell you. Sorry. But it went to, from three, it's three hundred for residential, three fifty for non-residential. The planning, let's see the next one down, sorry, the, this one here. Zoning map amendment, it went from one fifty to two hundred. That's this line item here. The next one down went from three hundred to four hundred. And that's for two to ten acres. And greater than ten acres, it went from nine hundred to a thousand. So it was increased a hundred dollars at this point. And that's as well as fees. This was three hundred for the, the zoning map amendment, conditional zoning. It went from three hundred to four hundred. The two to ten acres one went from six hundred to eight hundred. And then on the next page, greater than ten acres, it went from twelve hundred to sixteen hundred. Now, if you're looking at the development agreements, they were at six thousand, seven hundred and fifty with staff time and all the time that we've spent last year on those associated with it. We, she proposed eighty five hundred. And then the TIA fees, traffic ordinance fees, they're defined in our traffic ordinance, TIA ordinance, Article seven. So they vary depending on the size of it. The only other change that we have would be at the wrecker services. This was at one hundred and twenty dollars per vehicle, but we were having difficulty finding wrecker services that would do it for less, for at the one twenty rate. So we're bumping that up to be competitive for next year so that we can get, it's not costing the town money to, to tow vehicles. So we're proposing a change up from one twenty to one fifty. And then park and rec is, they're the same fees for, same as last year. So I will send this presentation. I wanted to point these out. I'd like to be able to have council agree to these fees or change them, you know, based on the, the highlighted items here. And if you would, you know, next meeting, we can at least finalize the schedule and, you know, get some other things going. So this is the end of my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you.
Alex, what you got for us?
All right. I think that's it. I would, I would suggest, Marcia, could we just read back the things that we owe the council? Cause I know we're on a timeline here and I want to make sure we're getting them everything they need to do here. And as, as she does it, I just want to really praise and credit Marcia for all the work she's done on the budget here. She's really done an excellent job. So good job, Marcia, as well as all of our staff and council. Appreciate your, your commitment and partnership in kind of figuring this out together.
All right. So Marcia, she just owes us the draft budget, the presentation. Anything else? Counsel, did you?
The draft presentation, I will send out the budget schedule again. And I will send out the line item budget that, that has the point one six six rate. And then I will do a couple, two other scenarios, maybe bumping that up to two points and, you know, something in between there, you know, going up to one and a half point, one and a half point, I don't know, somewhere in there. Okay?
And then council, is anything else y'all need?
And council member Martin, I'll reach out to, to Adrian about the, the roundabout question as well.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Yeah. I think we got to have a motion. I didn't do it last time to close this. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Martin. Can I get a second? Second by Ms. Paxton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Thank you all for your work, Marcia, Alex and your staff. So thank you all.
Not all.
Thank you.
Thank you.